Good evening and welcome to the Lincoln Public School Board of Education Candidate Forum. I am Jean McGuire, President of the League of Women Voters of Lincoln Lancaster County. The League, in partnership with 1011 Now, is hosting two candidate forums to provide an opportunity for voters to hear directly from the candidates on important local issues. This would not have been possible without the support of our community partners, including Civic Nebraska, Let's Talk Alliance, the NAACP Lincoln Branch, and YWCA Lincoln. I'd like to recognize NAACP Board Members Dr. Dwayne Mays and Geraldine Mays, who are in the audience today from NAACP. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political nonprofit organization of 160 local women and men whose mission is to empower voters and defend democracy. We neither support nor oppose candidates or political parties at any level of government. We engage in robust registration and voter education programs in advance of every election. For more information on the League of Women Voters of Lincoln Lancaster County or to join, please visit our website at LincolnLeague.org. Tonight, we're going to spend time with five of the six candidates running in three contested school districts: District 1, 3, and 7. District 5 is not contested. Cheryl Meyer Thompson, running in District 7, was not able to join us tonight because of a scheduling conflict. Cheryl did answer questions the League of Women Voters posed on Vote 411, the League's online voter guide, so I would encourage you to visit the website to learn more about her and all of the candidates who participated. The candidates here tonight will be introduced by our moderator, Danielle Shank. Danielle is the streaming anchor and evening digital executive producer at 1011 Now. We will start the forum with each candidate providing a 90-second opening statement, followed by 90-second responses to the questions asked. At the end of the forum, each candidate will provide a 60-second closing statement. You were offered an index card on the way in this evening, so you may submit a question for consideration. Please legibly print your question on the index card and hold it up in the air. One of our volunteers will retrieve it. Here in the front of the room, we have our timekeepers, League members Scott and Paula -- I'm sorry, Nancy, excuse me, Nancy. They will be holding up signs informing the candidates of their time remaining for their opening and closing statements, as well as their answers to the questions. So we may get as many questions answered as possible. We ask you to refrain from applause until the candidates have concluded their closing statements. Of course, we ask you to refrain from any flash photography and request that you turn off or silence your cellphones. Because the League of Women Voters of Lincoln Lancaster County is a 501(c)(3) organization, you are prevented from taking any video clips of this forum. The candidate forum is being livestreamed and recorded by 1011 Now, and the recording from tonight will be available within 24 hours. The recordings from last night's forums with the candidates from the Lincoln Airport Authority and the Lincoln City Council are already posted. Viewers can watch the events on 1011now.com or through the 1011Now app available on smartphones and streaming platforms, including Roku, Apple TV, Fire TV, and Android TV. Now let me introduce our moderator, Danielle Shank. Before joining 1011 Now, Danielle spent about three years as a reporter for NTV before becoming an anchor at KSNB Local 4 in Hastings. Danielle's passion and active engagement with the news has been evident since high school in Polk, Nebraska, and continued during her college years at Hastings College. Danielle joined 1011 Now in 2023 and assumed her current position of streaming anchor and evening digital executive producer in July 2024. Let me turn it over to Danielle.
Thank you, Jean. Good evening and welcome, everyone, to tonight's candidate forum for the Board of Education. My name is Danielle Shank, and I'll be serving as your moderator for this event. And we thank you so much for joining us to hear directly from the candidates running for a position that plays a significant role in the future of our community. The Lincoln Board of Education is charged with setting policies for Lincoln Public Schools, approving budgets, and making decisions that impact families, students, educators, and staff across the district. This forum provides you, the voters, with a chance to learn where the candidates stand on key issues in education and how they plan to support student success across our diverse and growing school system. As Jean mentioned, each candidate will have the opportunity to answer a series of questions. All responses will be timed to ensure equal opportunity, and we ask that all participants respect one another and the format. Now each candidate will have a minute and a half to introduce themselves and share why they're running for the Lincoln Board of Education. We'll begin with Mr. John Cartier, a lawyer vying for a seat in Northeast Lincoln's District 1.
Hi, good morning -- excuse me, good afternoon, everyone. My name is John Cartier. I'm here running for District 1, Lincoln Public Schools Board of Education. A little bit about myself: I'm originally from Las Vegas, Nevada, came out here to attend Concordia University on a track and field scholarship, and was fortunate enough to be adopted by the state, really. I fell in love with the state and ended up going to law school here in Lincoln and got married to a Nebraskan native. So for such a wonderful, warm community as Lincoln, it's been a real blessing to be able to raise my family here. I really, really appreciate how strong the public school system was from the very beginning once I learned a little bit more about the community. In Las Vegas, unfortunately, they don't have the strongest public school system. It consistently ranks pretty low in the national standings, but here at LPS, it's such a fantastic district that it's not perfect, but it really helps provide for its students and its teachers and the community as a whole. You know, I got involved in this Board of Education race because I believe in education and what it does for advancing folks' interests. As well as spending some time as Director of Voting Rights at Civic Nebraska, you know, I don't think there's anything more powerful than we as citizens can do than, one, be educated and, two, go out and vote. So for all of you to make it out today and to listen to us, we really, really appreciate it here, and especially a warm thank you to the fantastic partners of the League of Women Voters. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Cartier, now we'll hear from Mr. John Goodwin, CEO of the Malone Center, who is also seeking to represent District 1 in Northeast Lincoln.
All right, those who know me, let me see if I can do this in 90 seconds. So first and foremost, I would like to just say thank you to the League of Women Voters, also 10 and 11, the audience that is not here. This is a great privilege to sit here before you all, so I don't take this lightly. I'm very humbled. I am John Goodwin. I am the Executive Director or the CEO of the Malone, Clive Malone Community Center. I'm originally from Chicago, Illinois, moved here in 1996. A long story short, worked for Lincoln Public Schools for 20 years as a campus supervisor, also as a basketball and football coach. I currently still coach football over at Lincoln North Star High School, the freshman team there. Been over there for four years, so I'm still active in the community and working with kids and students. I will say this, the reason why I'm running is because I see, I definitely see myself in these young people, every last one of them that I talk to. I still go to schools, I still meet with students through the district because they are affiliated with our community at the Malone Center. And I really want to make sure that they have career pathways, and my goal is to make sure that they all understand what their gift are, so they can, their gift is, so they can be deployed into the world.
All right, thank you, Mr. Goodwin. Next, we'll go to Ms. Barbara Byer, the current District School Board Member, which covers Northwest Lincoln.
Hello, thank you for having me this evening. I want to thank the League and 1011 for sponsoring this event. My name is Barbara Byer. I've been on the school board come May for five terms, 20 years, and I really do appreciate the support of our community for our public school system. We do have a very good public school system. The reason that I'm choosing to run again is that we have a number of long-term board members going and retiring, Kathy Danic and Don Mayhew. Both of them have served over 24 years. And then Lanny Boswell, who had served three terms, nearly three terms, has recently passed away. And it's really important that we have an institutional knowledge of the board to be able to continue having a stable public educational system here in Lincoln. So a little bit about me, I work for the city of Lincoln as their grants person, and prior to that, I worked for the Lincoln Action Program. I'm running to go and advocate for all students. "All Means All" is more than a motto for the Lincoln Public Schools. I also want to go and want to thank my -- I will talk more later.
Thank you, Ms. Byer. Up next is Mr. Seth Duncan, who's looking to unseat the lone incumbent running for reelection in Northwest Lincoln's District 3.
Well, my name's Seth Duncan. I, yeah, I'm seeking for District 3 Board of Education. A little bit about me, I grew up in a faith-based household, homeschooled my whole life, kindergarten through high school. I'm six of seven kids and sitting in front of you guys here tonight, and those who are watching online, you may question, I'm 23, how does he have any experience? And you'll be right about that. I don't have any experience in the political spectrum, but with me being 23 and working in the public school systems for five, some years now, I'd say, working with these kiddos, I'd say I have some more experience than those around my age, but that's just how I feel. Why I'm running is because these kids need us. Like Barb said, all is all fits approach. These kids need us, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. Now we'll hear from Dr. Marilyn Johnson Farr, a professor of education at Dohen University, who's seeking to represent Southwest Lincoln's District 7.
Good evening. I am Dr. Marilyn Johnson Farr, a Lincolnite, a product of LPS and a former educator in the district, which has given me the skills in my role at Dohen University as a teacher of teachers. I'm running because my life's work is embedded in the call to serve, and in that serving, one must look for ways to give back to those who have given much. So I feel my role as a board member will allow me to give to students, staff, and families that have significantly impacted my journey.
All right, thank you to all the candidates for your opening statements. We'll now move into the question portion of the forum. Each candidate will have up to 90 seconds to respond to each question, so we'll begin with our first one with Mr. Goodwin. What do you believe is the most pressing issue currently facing Lincoln Public Schools, and how would you work with the board and the community to address it?
Well, one of the pressing issues is making sure that we select the right person to lead this organization, to lead the Lincoln Public Schools. So finding the superintendent to be able to be the head and move this train forward in a more positive, impactful way for all of our students and our staff. It's very important to ensure that there's great education for all of our students. Again, we want to make sure that each student know what their career is, what do they want to get into, what is their career path. So I'm just not looking at the numbers of how many graduate. We want to know what the impact of these students can bring once they walk across that stage for this community and outside this community. Definitely want to be a listener, definitely need to listen to staff. Staff is very important. Without teachers, who's going to teach the students? So it's important for us to really dial in and for me to really dial in to what the teachers' needs are, what the teachers are looking for, to be able to execute and to teach effectively what they need to, what the students need to learn for them to be effective during school and after they graduate.
All right, thank you, Mr. Goodwin. Moving on to Ms. Byer, what do you believe is the most pressing issue currently facing Lincoln Public Schools, and how would you work with the board and the community to address it?
Maintaining stability is the most important and priority issue facing our local school district. There are many changes occurring in DC, and they're starting to impact here locally. As example, LPS receives over $54 million in federal grants and other aid. That goes and funds things like the Free and Reduced Lunch Program. It funds special education services. It funds teacher coaching. It funds our community learning centers, which is before and after school. We need someone that has experience, an institutional knowledge of the district to be able to go and handle these big issues that are facing us. We already had to go and sign a letter from the U.S. Department of Education, which, once we dove, dived into it, we realized was nothing but assurance that we not discriminate. And I can't overemphasize how important it is to make sure that all our students, regardless of background, are served and have adequate education in our community.
Thank you, Ms. Byer. Moving on to Mr. Duncan, what do you believe is the most pressing issue currently facing Lincoln Public Schools, and how would you work with the board and the community to address it?
Well, I will first start by saying I feel like there's more than one pressing issue within LPS's system, but the one that presses with me the most, I'd say, is mental health and everything like that, because there is a stigmatism to mental health. Not a lot of people like to talk about it. So what I would do is if I were elected, I would help, like, more, open with more school resource officers and talk with more teachers, parents, and see what we can do as a community to help these students and/or teachers who are suffering from this mental health. Because like I said, there is a stigmatism, and not everybody likes to talk about it. So if I can help by fixing it and reduce the mental health problem within our community, I think we'll be okay.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. Dr. Johnson Farr, what do you believe is the most pressing issue currently facing Lincoln Public Schools, and how would you work with the board and the community to address it?
Our school community continues to thrive in various ways, and we recognize that we can never just settle, but we must continually look for ways to build on that thriving to ensure that all students receive a high-quality education. A healthy district such as ours prioritizes teacher and staff well-being. They are the glue. When they are well, they can lead with love, grace, and compassion, and bring their whole selves to the workspace that benefits our students.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson Farr. And lastly, Mr. Cartier, what do you believe is the most pressing issue currently facing Lincoln Public Schools, and how would you work with the board and the community to address it?
Thank you for this really important question. In my perspective, I'm really concerned about the concerted effort that has brought a lot of mistrust and distrust and erosion of our institutions, one being the public school system. I think LPS has been able to weather the storm a lot better than a lot of other jurisdictions over the last decade or so, but we are not immune to these attacks. And part of that is tied to now the threat of losing tens of millions of dollars in federal funding and a lot of unanswered questions. So the uncertainty at the federal level is a huge issue, and the way we're going to get through this storm is as long as we all work together on the board, come to a consensus on practical solutions, how we can move forward, there are going to be a step in the right direction. But as well as continuing to build trust with our communities and be, stay transparent, parents and our community need to feel like they can come to the board members and express their honest feelings and hard truths, but at the same time, we need to stay firm in what we know works and what doesn't work and strive to have a system that's going to really focus on students and the classroom as much as possible. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cartier. We'll move on to our second question and begin with Ms. Byer. What should the district's top budget priority be, and how would you ensure financial responsibility while still meeting the needs of students and staff?
My top budget priority is classroom size, the teacher-to-student ratio. And that is definitely a budget issue because our biggest line item are teachers. That's the work that we do. In the last couple of years, we have lowered the levy because there've been changes in state aid, but we've had to go and make sure that we are competitive with wages, with salaries, with benefits, and that we provide a welcoming environment, not only for our teachers, but particularly for our students. So we have a teacher shortage right now, so we have to keep up the pay rate for everyone. To address that teacher shortage, we have to be creative. And so we have started to go and create a Grow Your Own Teaching Program through our paraeducators. We offer the opportunity to go and fast-track into a teaching certificate. So it's really important that when we look at our budget, that we realize that we are a people organization and that we need to make sure that our teachers are happy to work for Lincoln Public Schools.
Thank you, Ms. Byer. Mr. Duncan, what should the district's top budget priority be, and how would you ensure financial responsibility while still meeting the needs of students and staff?
I'd say the biggest budget we need is for, like, teacher and paraprofessional retention. As like Barbara said, we are short need of teachers, as is for paraprofessionals. As someone who's worked within the district in various capacities, I seen, I see shortages in paraprofessionals and teachers alike within the school or even LPS transportation. And going back to the budget, we have one of the higher budgets I've seen within, I think, Nebraska, it's not the nation. And us taxpayers, I feel like we should have a right and a know to, where's that money going? So if I would say get elected, and I don't know if I'm getting off track here, but I would advocate for budget transparency because taxpayers have a know, a right to know, where's this money going? Is it going to utilize for the classrooms? Is it going for the teacher pay, paraprofessional pay? So that's all I got to say on that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Duncan. Dr. Johnson Farr, what should the district's top budget priority be, and how would you ensure financial responsibility while still meeting the needs of students and staff?
In this season, we have to continue to be good stewards of taxpayer dollars while continuing to provide a high-quality education, which at the moment is challenging with the uncertainty of the availability of state and federal funds. I am very confident that LPS will face complex challenges, but will not panic regarding how they will continue to allocate human resources and materials. If I am elected, I will work to make sure that we don't lose sight of the dollars needed for the classroom and take every opportunity to communicate and listen to the community.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson Farr. Now, Mr. Cartier, what should the district's top budget priority be, and how would you ensure financial responsibility while still meeting the needs of students and staff?
Top budget priority is keeping as much money as possible within our classrooms, and a huge part of that is teacher retention and teacher benefits. Aside from that, I really agree with what Mr. Duncan brought up, and that's the mental health needs of students. As someone who's a little outside now of being a student myself, but still close enough to understand that the unique challenges we have struggled with, including, you know, the proliferation of social media, among a lot of other issues of technology have seriously affected the mental health needs of students and young people today. So as much as possible, we need to continue to support, yes, the classroom and the teachers, but making sure that programming and other mental health needs are accessible by students. And, you know, how do we do this? You know, we're going to need to be as transparent as possible. You're going to hear me say this 100 times, but if we need to increase the levy, we need to communicate that out to our citizens because we need to invest in our education system. There is no alternative, and there's no reasonable argument against it in my mind. So if I'm elected, I'm going to be a huge proponent to making sure that our current budget is going to be there, and if we need to exceed it and go above and beyond, then, well, we'll have to make some tough choices as a community, but I'll make sure that it's communicated out that investing in public schools is worth it, and everyone's going to be satisfied with the end result, and that's students who are ready for the new challenges of this day and age.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cartier. Mr. Goodwin, what should the district's top budget priority be, and how would you ensure financial responsibility while still meeting the needs of students and staff?
You know, as a taxpayer and meeting with other CEOs in the city, they had one concern. The concern was not paying the taxes, it's what is the, what is the taxes going towards, and can they see the investment, right? If I can see an investment, if I can go talk to my investment, if I can hire my investment, if I can get them ready to work in my company and to expand my company for my company to grow, then yes, I have no problem paying a higher tax if I can get the benefit and the investment of this person that is graduating in this career that I have, that I know that I can leave my business with someone that I have invested my property tax to. Now, with that being said, yes, we want to keep property taxes low. Who doesn't, right? But at the same time, our focus and our priority needs to be in that classroom. The value, the most important value here is our students, and the teachers that are teaching are students. That's the most important value, and we have to come up with a balanced fiscal responsibility to be able to manage and be very transparent of our property tax, but at the same time, provide the high-quality education to prepare, prepare all of these students to go to their career and be successful, whatever that success is to them.
All right, thank you, Mr. Goodwin. We'll kind of build on that question here for our third one, and we'll start with Mr. Duncan. Recruiting and retaining high-quality educators remains a challenge for many districts. What specific policies or programs would you support to ensure Lincoln remains competitive in attracting and keeping teachers?
Well, I would say like what Barbara was just saying, that we have a fast track for paraeducators, that if they want to excel their career from paraeducator to teacher, LPS offers that. So I would offer, we would continue to offer that, plus retention bonuses for both teachers and paraprofessionals alike, because as we've mentioned, there is a shortage of both. I've seen it, and I've lived it. I mean, there's not much more to say there, just fast-track them to teacher status, retention bonuses, and offer more incentives. Like, make sure it's a secure place, because also, like Barbara said, like, these teachers are teaching upwards of 20 kids, 25 kids in a classroom, and they're by themselves, and some of them don't have that paraprofessional. So I feel like a lot of them put their necks on the line for that. I don't know, again, if I'm going off track here, but they have a right to have to remain safe within the schools. So having a retention bonus and a safety net to fall back on, I feel like that would help boost the morale of keeping the teachers within our school district.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. Moving to Dr. Johnson Farr, recruiting and retaining high-quality educators remains a challenge for many districts. What specific policies or programs would you support to ensure Lincoln remains competitive in attracting and keeping teachers?
I think it is necessary to continue to look at alternative pathways to certify those who have received the call to teach. Many enter into our teaching profession and in their student teaching experiences once those are completed. One of the trends that we see now is that teachers, our student teachers are being hired before the season has been completed, which puts extra accountability on higher ed institutions to provide extra supervision. So we aren't just looking for warm bodies. We're looking for people who have the desire and who are competent to teach. Working at the negotiations table with district officials and with the Lincoln Education Association who endorsed me is a good way to ensure that there is adequate compensation and opportunities for growth.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson Farr. Mr. Cartier, recruiting and retaining high-quality educators remains a challenge for many districts. What specific policies or programs would you support to ensure Lincoln remains competitive in attracting and keeping teachers?
This is a really good question to bring up specifically special needs teachers and just how difficult it is to, one, recruit and then maintain those teachers working in that career field, because it's incredibly challenging. in that career field, because it's incredibly challenging, and oftentimes, they don't feel supported enough, or heard enough, or respected enough. So, you know, partly the issue of the erosion of trust in public schools. We need to fix that. We need to make sure that our, our teachers feel like they're being listened to, they're respected, because at the end of the day, there's no better expert on how to educate our students and how to prepare them best for the future than, than our teachers. So, that, among other creative solutions, such as direct pipelines for teacher development and recruitment from colleges is one thing, examining opportunities for repayment of student loans outside of the Public Student Loan Forgiveness Program. These are all really important things to consider, and when on the board, it's going to be a lot of fun working with not just the other board members, but community members who have these great ideas for what we can do to better retain our teachers and give them a better quality of life.
Thank you, Mr. Cartier. Mr. Goodwin, recruiting and retaining high-quality educators remains a challenge for many districts. What specific policies or programs would you support to ensure Lincoln remains competitive in attracting and keeping teachers?
Repeat that last, I didn't get that last.
Yeah. What specific policies or programs would you support to ensure Lincoln remains competitive in attracting and keeping teachers?
Teachers, teachers have, I got so much I wanna say on this, I'm trying in 90 seconds. It's important for teachers to take care of themselves, but it's also important for us to be able to take care of those teachers, and provide some sort of, of, of rest to where they're able or are capable to do the job that they are there to do. They're in school to teach, right? They go to school to teach. They come to the school system to teach, right? Behaviors and the other things like that that happens take away from what they're trying to do. So, it's stressful. When I talk to teachers, it's very stressful. Some of them don't feel appreciated. Some of them don't feel like they have a voice. These are the things that I hear. So, really, self-care. How can we make sure that our teachers are taking care of themselves for them to be able to teach at a high level to students to be prepared for their careers? Right? If that's, if that's reducing class size, but adding more help into the classroom, if that's, if expanding access to childcare, if that's using partners and families and community-based organizations to come inside the school and help provide services, because we deal as community agencies, and we expertise in different, our expertise is in different services, for us to be able to come in and help and provide more of a service to those teachers and to the school system. So, that's what, I think I ran out of time.
We appreciate your passion there, Mr. Goodwin. And lastly, Ms. Byer, recruiting and retaining high-quality educators remains a challenge for many districts. What specific policies or programs would you support to ensure Lincoln remains competitive in attracting and keeping teachers?
Well, I mentioned earlier that we have several Grow Our Own initiatives, namely with paraeducators. We're expanding that to other unclassified jobs. We also have a education career track out at the Lincoln, at the Career Academy. We also have like a student club to encourage our high school students to consider education as a career. We also have a special partnership with the University and of Nebraska and Carney to help people who have four-year degrees in other areas, perhaps science or math, and want to go and enter the teaching profession, and we can fast-track them through a program at Carney. We definitely have to be competitive on compensation, and we have to have a supportive work environment. Part of a supportive work environment is to make sure that we have substitute teachers. We've created positions called associate teachers to be able to take on a full semester or a full year when someone, because of illness, or pregnancy, or other reasons, needs to take a break. We also provide extra pay for those substitute teachers that go and serve in our harder-to-serve schools. And lastly, we do mentoring throughout the educational career experience.
Thank you, Ms. Byer. We'll move on to our other question, and start with Dr. Johnson Farr. This will kind of build on another topic that has been touched on. How should the district balance the need for school safety with increasing demands for mental and behavioral health support for students?
I think we have to live in a season of continually assessing what's needed, and that requires good communication with staff, and it ties back to staff and student well-being. We also need to build relationships and ensure that there are routines, procedures, and that there is active supervision in place. When I was in the classroom, we dedicated time to teaching our students what to do if an emergency occurred. Learning cannot be optimal until I know I am safe. School really is the only sanctuary some students have to count on. Once again, partnerships with interns in the mental health field are valuable.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson Farr. Moving on to Mr. Cartier, how should the district balance the need for school safety with increasing demands for mental and behavioral health support for students?
Well, I, I think if you focus on inherently the mental and behavioral health needs of students, that's gonna increase in, in school safety. Personally, looking back at my time as a student, sometimes the difference in how I was feeling was a, the right conversation with the school counselor. So, making sure that there are professionals on these campuses that are able to, you know, listen to students, make them feel heard, and direct them to resources where appropriate is paramount, and should be a huge top-budget priority of ours moving forward, and as we come to making tough decisions, making sure it's not gonna be on the chopping block.
Thank you, Mr. Cartier. Mr. Goodwin, how should the district balance the need for school safety with increasing demands for mental and behavioral health support for students?
I would say from experience, my degree is in security management, and I've done security for 20 years in Lincoln Public Schools, as well as other security detail that I've done in my lifetime. And I will say this, Joe Wright and his team is doing a great job in making sure that our schools are safe. Can they get better? Sure. Anything could get better. Right? And, and so, with that being said, it's important for safety. It's important to, when I brought, when I brought my kids to school at, at, at the school where they were at, Lincoln High, that they felt safe. Even as a security person, you wanna feel safe. Right? They're there eight hours plus a day. They, we wanna, we are trusting the schools to, to make sure that they're getting education, they're getting fed, and, and, and they're understanding who they are and where they need to go in life. And Joe Wright has done a, a great job in doing that. Stand into detail, stand on top of things. There are things that Lincoln Public Schools are doing as far as security-wise, that other school districts are not doing across the state. And that comes with experience that he brings, and so, I'm happy of what he's doing and the things that he's trying to do to keep our skis, our kids and our students and scholars safe while they're there, so they can feel and get that education, and that teachers can feel more comfortable in what they're doing and operating in their gift to develop, to develop these students in their careers.
Thank you, Mr. Goodwin. Ms. Byer, how should the district balance the need for school safety with increasing demands for mental and behavioral health support for students?
Well, you cannot go and separate security and safety issues from mental health and behavioral health needs. So, the school board partnered with the City of Lincoln a number of years ago to create the Safe and Successful Kids Initiative. And out of that, we were able to develop a memorandum of understanding between the school district and the city that particularly targeted our school resource officers, who are police officers. And through that memorandum, we were able to go and bring more training to our SROs so that they understand youth development and are better able to serve them. We also expanded that program into the middle schools, with the SROs at the middle schools being able to answer calls at elementary schools. When we started developing the program, we discovered through our own data collection, which we're among the first in the country to do this kind of data collection, that indeed, there are disparities in referrals to juvenile justice. So, based on data, we have modified how we approach student discipline. We've also gone and secured a number of U.S. Department of Justice grants that go and target troubled youth and provide the supports that they need.
Thank you, Ms. Byer. Lastly, Mr. Duncan, how should the district balance the need for school safety with increasing demands for mental and behavioral health support for students?
Well, as I, like I mentioned earlier, mental health, there's a stigmatism to behind it. Not a lot of people like to talk about it. So, what I would do is advocate, like, with more school counselors, police officers, whether that's for, like I said, mental health, or just school safety in general. I mean, just a couple months ago, I don't know if anyone's heard of the incident at McPhee, but they went into lockdown because someone was trying to break in. We worked with the local police officers, and they were there and got the person responsible for trying to break in within minutes. And can we improve on that? Yeah. But the sad reality is, like I said, there is a stigmatism to mental health, and people don't talk about it. So, like I said, I would advocate for more transparency with school counselors and talk to them, parents, students, teachers, anyone who needs help, they will get it.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. We will start with Mr. Cartier for this question from the crowd. How do you feel about tax dollars going to private schools in the form of vouchers?
Well, this is an easy one. I don't agree with that at all. I think for public funding of schools, we need to keep it exactly that, public-funded. And for students that choose to go to private school, you know, choice their parents make, that's totally fine. I, I don't think taxpayers should be subsidizing that decision, however. But I will mention that, you know, LPS does a fantastic job of delivering resources and services to all students across the district, whether or not they attend private or public school, especially those that suffer from a variety of developmental disabilities. And I think that's something we should continue funding, because when we look at education as a whole, that is a investment in all of our future moving forward, and that's something I'd continue to, you know, wanna keep, keep doing. But otherwise, I don't agree with school vouchers. And a huge, huge shout-out to the Nebraska Education Association and their successful ballot initiative, which defeated, you know, school vouchers in a huge monumental way, even though we live in a red state. I think the will of the voters is clear and resounding. We value our public education system, and we're gonna fight to protect it at every turn.
Thank you, Mr. Cartier. Mr. Goodwin, how do you feel about tax dollars going to private schools in the form of vouchers?
I definitely don't agree with it, and I'm not gonna bore you with the same type of answer that, that John gave you, so I, I ditto what he said. Public, public dollars belong in public schools. Period. That's all I got to say about that.
Thank you, Mr. Goodwin. Ms. Byer, how do you feel about tax dollars going to private schools in the form of vouchers?
I do not support this proposal. The voters of Nebraska have voted it down. I think we should respect their votes. But I also wanna go and talk about Lincoln Public Schools and school choice. Let me go through the different kinds of choices we have for our high school students. We have the Career Academy, which is partnered with the Southeast Community College, where students can go and earn college credit while still going and working towards their high school diploma. We have, I know, over a dozen career paths. We have the Science Focus Program over at the Zoo. We have Arts and Humanities directly across from Lincoln High. We have Nebraska Business Training out at Standing Bear High School. We have the FUSE Program, which goes and provides math and STEM education through, which is being expanded throughout the district. We have an alternative high school called Bryan Community High School for those who dropped out and want to come back. We also have the International Backgloria Program at Lincoln High that allows you to get an international high school diploma. We also, finally, have the Aviation Program at, at North Star. So, we provide a lot of different choices for our students, and we'll continue to explore more.
Thank you, Ms. Byer. Mr. Duncan, how do you feel about tax dollars going to private schools in the form of vouchers?
Going back to what I was saying earlier, like I said, focus on budget transparency. Taxpayers need to know where their money is going. And yes, that's what the question is asking, if I'm okay with taxpayer money to go into private schools in voucher form. How do we know where that money's going from said vouchers? So, in my part, I'd say I am against it.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. Dr. Johnson Farr, how do you feel about tax dollars going to private schools in the form of vouchers?
I don't support private dollars going to, public dollars going to private schools. But especially if we're going to continue to ensure high-quality education this season, we need to protect what we have. While we do share some services that are needed in private settings, perhaps, once again, in this season of challenge for all of us, we may be able to collaborate on ways to lower costs, perhaps, in both settings.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson Farr. Now, we will go with another question, starting with Mr. Goodwin. As the district looks for a new superintendent, what qualities and qualifications do you believe are most important in a leader for Lincoln Public Schools?
Strong vision. Has to have a vision on where we are going successfully. Right? Committed to, not just a vision, but committed to the job, committed to the work. Have a relationship with someone who has a relationship with community partners, parents, stakeholders. That's very important, because as we are not getting the money, state aid, as we used to get, it's important to have these stakeholders and these relationships in this community, and out, even outside the community, that can bring in resources for us to continue to provide high-quality educations to our students.
Thank you, Mr. Goodwin. Ms. Byer, as the district looks for a new superintendent, what qualities and qualifications do you believe are most important in a leader for Lincoln Public Schools?
Well, Lincoln is a moderate-sized city, yet we are a large urban school district, which means we're a unified school district. We go and we take students clear across the city. And because we annex, the school board annexes at the same time that the city, the city council and the mayor annexes new developments, we go and share the same pot of money, which means that low-income areas can anticipate and expect, and even demand, a quality education. It doesn't matter where you live in Lincoln. So, why is that important with going for a new superintendent? The superintendent has to have the experience to go and serve a district of over thirty, forty-two thousand students, students from many different backgrounds. Forty percent of our students are from minority backgrounds, forty-five percent of our students are low-income. Of course, a superintendent must have all the certifications and qualifications that are necessary and required by the Nebraska Department of Education. We want our superintendent to be a person who can go and provide good management and be an educational leader, and at the same time, understand that he has to, he or she has to go and develop and maintain community rapport and respect.
Thank you, Ms. Byer. Mr. Duncan, as the district looks for a new superintendent, what qualities and qualifications do you believe are most important in a leader for Lincoln Public Schools?
I would, Barbara just started going like what Mr. Goodwin said, we need someone with a strong vision, someone who is here for our community. And with those qualities and qualifications that he or she may have, I'd also like to see our superintendent within our own community, because I feel like, I'm not saying for past superintendents outside our region, quality people, it's just, I feel like to help within our community, we should have someone from our community. our community.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. Dr. Johnson Farr, as the district looks for a new superintendent, what qualities and qualifications do you believe are most important in a leader for Lincoln Public Schools?
The superintendent is a valuable member of the school community and he or she needs to be someone who meets no strangers, a visionary and a strategic thinker, a strong communicator who can use data effectively, but is open to using additional tools in the process. It needs to be someone who does not become defensive when questioned, isn't threatened by diversity and will work tirelessly. In the old days when I was in the district, he or she could walk into a building and call out every teacher's names. Connections and relationships are critical.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson Farr. Lastly, Mr. Cartier, as the district looks for a new superintendent, what qualities and qualifications do you believe are most important in a leader for Lincoln Public Schools?
Outside of what the other candidates have mentioned in terms of qualities, we need someone who has strong moral ethic, ethic values and someone, you know, I, I, long story short, I think Dr. Skretta has done a great job being interim superintendent, someone like that, he, you know, should be considered if he's interested. So that means someone who not only has the credentials, but they come from Lincoln and they understand at a very intimate level, LPS and the unique challenges that it faces. So, you know, if he's up for the job, maybe we can save a hundred thousand dollars on a national search firm, which didn't pan out so well, and find a great local candidate that way.
Thank you, Mr. Cartier. Now we will move on to another question from the crowd and we'll start with Ms. Byer. We actually had several questions surrounding this topic. LPS is known for being welcoming to all students, including those with disabilities and transgender students. How would you ensure LPS continues being welcoming to all students in this locally and nationally political climate?
Um, first of all, we need to go and follow the law. There is civil rights legislation from the nineteen-sixties. There is the IDA Act that provides for us to go and educate those with disabilities. There's the ADA, which goes and lowers the barriers to education and provides supports. I'm sorry, could you repeat this question for just a second?
Um, how would you ensure LPS continues being welcoming to all students in this political climate locally and nationally?
So, LPS really values diversity because we're all unique individuals in the community. And so following the law is critical. On the state level is required by state law that we provide multicultural education. I do not want to see us ever go away from that. It is super important that our children know that they're loved, that they're welcomed, that we value them for who they are. To stray away from this, it is, is to go and diminish the educational experience for everyone. We are strengthened through diversity. We learn from each other. So I really think that through my board service, this has been an important aspect of my board service. And I just want to reassure everybody that if you vote for me, you're going to have a voice that supports diversity and supports children from where they come from and that we're going to work hard for them to reach their potential.
Thank you, Ms. Byer. Mr. Duncan, LPS is known for being welcoming to all students, including those with disabilities and transgender students. How would you ensure LPS continues being welcoming to all students in this political climate locally and nationally?
Well, as someone who's worked with special needs children now for five plus years, as I before, before mentioned, I am an advocate for special needs students and those who are transgender. And as Barbara said, that we are learning from one another. So I continue on that with that together, we can make a difference whether we're, whatever. So, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. Dr. Johnson Farr, LPS is known for being welcoming to all students, including those with disabilities and transgender students. How would you ensure LPS continues being welcoming to all students in this political climate locally and nationally?
We have to with great intentionality, make sure that the folks who are within the school system are working at understanding the complexity of the different human experiences that exist. We can talk about it being welcoming, but without intentionality and training and opportunities for conversations and then a spot when I have concerns that's safe for me to go and express those concerns. So we have to continually train, educate, but also create spaces where we can engage in brave and courageous conversations.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson Farr. Mr. Cartier, LPS is known for being welcoming to all students, including those with disabilities and transgender students. How would you ensure LPS continues being welcoming to all students in this political climate locally and nationally?
Coming from this question on a, on a very human level, you know, the one part is we are in a fantastic school district where all means all and they take that seriously. And today we need to recognize and pay attention to the attacks coming from, you know, federal level and around our local communities on these marginalized groups. And I think it's appropriate to also bring up that here at a unitarian church where, you know, they practice religion, in my opinion, in a wonderful way, where you see a religious organization oftentimes partnering with gay rights organizations and coming, with it being Easter recently, you know, coming from this as well as perspective of what would Jesus do? Would he be warm and welcoming of all people regardless of who they are? Absolutely. I think we should strive to, to practice that every day and really focus on the individual and their needs for their education, educational journey and, you know, a part of that resisting the national banter of, of fear and bigotry and, and, um, and, and not giving that any air or light and keeping our local control of our school district here sacred and continuing that fight together.
Thank you, Mr. Cartier. Mr. Goodwin, LPS is known for being welcoming to all students, including those with disabilities and transgender students. How would you ensure LPS continues being welcoming to all students in this political climate locally and nationally?
Well, we understand all students matter. And what I mean by that is each student has, I'm big on gifts, and each student that is in Lincoln Public Schools or outside of Lincoln Public Schools have a set of gifts that the world is waiting on. Now, when I look at students, I look at all the students and I compare them to a seed of an apple. And the reason why I compare that, them to a seed of an apple, the apple seed, is because when I see a seed, what's inside that seed is a tree. A tree that's going to bear some fruit that we all will be able to use and enjoy and experience. And so when I say that all students matter, they matter and that gift that they have need to be brought out and be deployed to the world. And the only way they'd be able to do that is when they recognize who they really are as a student and the capability that they have to move forward. So I look at them, no, you're not a seed, you're a tree. And when we come together and really focus on the student and the need of the student on all students, we'd be able to see the benefit and the impact that they will bring. And maybe we won't, but our children will be able to see it. When we're dead and gone, they will be able to see the fruit that they bear based on the experience that we have given them while they're in school.
Thank you, Mr. Goodwin. We will move on to our other, another question now, starting with Mr. Duncan. With ongoing concerns about test scores and achievement gaps, what strategies would you support to improve academic performance and outcomes for all students?
In regards of test scores and being at a low point, I feel like we should advocate for after-school classes, testing, extra teacher help and a help from the community, mostly the parents from the community and see how they can help their student, their child and see where they can get help within for those test scores.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. Dr. Johnson Farr, with ongoing concerns about test scores and achievement gaps, what strategies would you support to improve academic performance and outcomes for all students?
We all want students to experience success while in school and after they graduate because at some point in time, they will look after us. So we want to make sure resources are adequately distributed to allow preparation to increase academic achievement and understanding also of data-driven decision-making. We need to look at ways to mentor and enrichment opportunities that help students, working with teacher education candidates, community agencies and parents to see what the needs are and how we might support those needs beyond the school day.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson Farr. Mr. Cartier, with ongoing concerns about test scores and achievement gaps, what strategies would you support to improve academic performance and outcomes for all students?
For a subject like this, I would really rely with my partnership with teachers, the educators who know most about how to keep students engaged and motivated, as well as following evidence-based best practices. And my understanding is, and I lived this personally, when students have after-school programming, whether it's sports or another school club, they, they have that fire, that passion for school where they keep coming back and they stay in attendance and they stay out of trouble, which can be a huge issue for students. So making sure that at all of our schools, no matter what the zip code is, that after-school programming is adequately funded is a huge priority of mine and making sure that, you know, although LPS does a lot of things well, again, it's not perfect and we can continue to make sure all facilities, whether it's north or south Lincoln schools, have the same resources available to them and the same opportunities to all students.
Thank you, Mr. Cartier. Mr. Goodwin, with ongoing concerns about test scores and achievement gaps, what strategies would you support to improve academic performance and outcomes for all students?
It is, is very difficult for anyone to learn, even a student. Let's just talk about the students when they're dealing with a lot of mess that they're dealing with. To get to the root is, I, I, and I was one of those students. I'm dealing with trauma and I'm dealing with these different things that I'm, I'm, I'm experiencing in my life and you expect me to learn something and, and, and to score really well and I can't eat and I, I don't know where my next meal. So what I'm saying is we have to meet the student where they are. We have to be very intentional. And if, if the schools can't do it, which is no problem, we have experts in the community that can come in and work with those students to be able, it's not that they're not smart and that they can't score well. Sometimes it's the things and the trauma that they're dealing with that need, that they need to be healed from in the process of now wanting to learn. I don't, I'm having a hard time with myself. You expect me to, to learn this mathematic equation and, and to score? No, I, I need help. I need to find out what's going on with me first, right? So getting to the root of why the student is, is, is struggling is number one. That's, that's, that's really a, a top priority for them to then be successful. Learn how to be the CEO of yourself, be healed from the trauma that you're going through. Now I am more apt and more interested in learning and maybe scoring a little bit differently because I got, now have food in my stomach.
Thank you, Mr. Goodwin. Lastly, Ms. With ongoing concerns about test scores and achievement gaps, what strategies would you support to improve academic performance and outcomes for all students?
Forty-five percent of our students attending Lincoln Public Schools live in poverty. As Mr. Goodwin had said, a lot of kids come with a lot of needs. So we have to address those. We provide supports to, um, students, particularly in Title One, which means lower income neighborhoods, those schools. Some of those supports are extra help. We give help to teachers with curriculum coaching. We try to make the classroom sizes smaller. We try to get the kids involved in activities because yes, indeed, when kids are involved and invested in their school, they're much more likely to want to come to school and want to learn. But I think it's really important for us to note that a public school system, no matter how good it is, cannot resolve poverty issues. This is something that we have to do in partnership with our community, our state and our country. And lastly, we need to go and question how, uh, student progress is measured. Right now, with the system that we have in the state of Nebraska, we can predict where that student lives by their test scores. That means we know that the way we're testing, that they're low income. We don't go and measure the progress from where they started to where they're ending up. So we go and we-
Thank you, Ms. Byer. We'll have to interrupt you for that.
That's okay.
Moving on to the next question and we'll start with Dr. Johnson Farr. What do you think about the elimination of the Federal Department of Education?
It is a challenge and it requires us to really have to do some creative thinking about what is next. I don't believe it's a time to panic, but I believe it's a time to be really thoughtful about how can we still continue to do business, not as usual, but in a different way that again provides a high quality education for our students and takes some of the additional stress off of those who have been called to teach. So not easy decision, it is a reality and perhaps in that same perspective, that we have to find ways to collaborate with other stakeholders who too value education.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson Farr. Mr. Cartier, what do you think about the elimination of the Federal Department of Education?
To borrow the words of former President Joe Biden, I think it's a bunch of malarkey. Personally, the Department of Education has been a great partner of Lincoln Public Schools specifically and is, and across the whole nation. You know, the, they're saying that we're just going to return control completely to the states, but the issue of that being oftentimes smaller states like Nebraska, a lot of the federal dollars we get is subsidized by the tax revenue coming in from larger states. Again, we're fortunate to live in a community like Lincoln where there happens to be a budget surplus, but in the state currently, we're looking at a massive budget deficit due to the failings of the unicameral. And oftentimes the decisions coming out of the unicameral is highly politicized and not based on reality or best practices, quite frankly. So moving forward, you know, one hand, we have local control, we have, and there's going to be another good question that touches on this in a little bit. We have ways for us to generate revenue here, but we're not going to be able to rely on the unicameral and the state to provide for a lot of the loss in funding and we'll need to get creative. And it, as it's been stated, it's not a time to panic, but it's definitely a time to double down and do some real hard work and make sure that our classrooms don't suffer and there's no loss in services where possible.
Thank you, Mr. Cartier. Mr. Goodwin, what do you think about the elimination of the Federal Department of Education?
I mean, definitely don't agree with that. But it's one thing that I don't want to focus on is what we do not have and what we're losing. I think most of that energy needs to go towards what can we do with what we have and how can we move forward and focus, making sure that the focus is on the classroom. What can we do? And sometimes, and I, I can include myself in that, sometimes we get in our own way and what I mean by that is we're focusing on, man, they did this, they did this, we're losing, we losing, we losing, we losing. Okay, what do we have right now? Let's direct that energy. Let's get, and, and again, I agree with those that are already spoken, no need to panic. What's the solution? What can we do now to better serve these students? Get very creative in what we're doing. Use these partnerships that we have, the community agencies that are out here, discuss those issues with them to see how we can better collaborate together to again continue to make positive impact in the classroom.
Thank you, Mr. Goodwin. Ms. Byer, oh, what are your, what do you think about the elimination of the Federal Department of Education?
Well, first of all, Congress is the only entity that actually can go and eliminate the Department of Education. Some form of the, uh, job duties that the department does has been around since the mid nineteen- Some form of the job duties that the department does has been around since the mid-19th century. It was called the Office of Education. What do we get beyond the grants that I had mentioned before, the $54 million worth of support from the federal government? We get expertise, expertise on how to go and help kids that are struggling with learning disabilities. We get the best practices on how to go and best educate children that have, are on the autism spectrum. We can go and work with kids these days that have a variety of needs. We have over 6,600 kids that qualify for special education. We get support from the Department of Ed in money and in educational methods. The majority of those students, easily 90%, 95% of that 6,600 are going to go and graduate on time. They're going to go to college or post-secondary job training. It is incredibly important that we keep this resource going. Yes, we can have block grants, but those are unpredictable.
Thank you, Ms. Byer. Mr. Duncan, what do you think about the elimination of the Federal Department of Education?
Well, I would say I'm against all odds against everyone here at the table. I'd say I'm for it because, as I mentioned before, with our budget, we've got one of the larger budgets, as I, like I said, mentioned. So with local funding and with that said large budget, I feel like we'll be okay sustaining Lincoln Public Schools as it is without the need of Department of Education.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. We will have, moving on to another question, and we'll start with Mr. Cartier. What is your position on restricting student access to library books and why?
This was something that learned a lot more about from, you know, teachers in the LPS system. And I think the current librarian policy, we get it correct here in LPS. So for one, if there is an issue with a book, there's a review process for parents and other members of the public to bring that forward and challenge it. My understanding, that's only happened one time in the last couple decades or so and that book wasn't pulled from the shelves. But at the same time, we also allow parents the opportunity to say, no, their student can't check out a specific book or material. And on one hand, I, you know, for me, the intellectual freedom of that student, I want to be an advocate and respect that, but at the same time, parent rights and transparency, that's a policy I currently agree with. So currently, I think LPS gets this sensitive issue correct, but always open to hearing opposing viewpoints and how we might be able to do things better.
Thank you, Mr. Cartier. Mr. Goodwin, what is your position on restricting student access to library books and why?
I support, I support the age-appropriate access for parents, but parents have to be involved. The most important thing that we're, the one thing that we have in common is that we want the best for their child. As a teacher, as an administrator, we want the best for their child. As a parent, you should want the best for your child. With that being said, learning don't stop just in the classroom. It should continue outside the classroom as well. When we talking about these different books and LPS doesn't, and again, don't need to recreate anything, they already have a policy, already put in place. And I would love for more parent involvement in those selections. I would love for students to learn more than just what they're learning right now, to learn about native history and black history, things that I've learned in schools in Chicago, right? I had a diverse of knowledge based on the people that I was around, right? They taught those things in school. It was appropriate, right? So when I went home, I had to learn more about my culture and different cultures that I am around, that I am engaged in. That's important. That's important for these students to know different cultures and different things that are happening in different areas, right? So yes, I support it, but parents, I'm hoping, and I'm hoping to engage, that they will be able to be more supportive in this election.
Thank you, Mr. Goodwin. Ms. Byer, what is your position on restricting student access to library books and why?
Well, students are minor children, so parents do have the right to opt out and we are definitely supportive of that and we do have that in our policies. We also have age-appropriate materials. We have educated people who are school librarians that go and vet what is on our library shelves. That said, I think it's really important that we understand and recognize that the ability to critically think is the foundation of democracy. And one of the ways that we teach students how to be a critical thinker is to provide them with many different materials, reading materials that may challenge how they think now or may inform them about other people that may be living in their community or in a different country. We need to allow our students to be able to access knowledge and we need to have those school librarians there, in that library, going and helping guide the development of critical thinking. Of course, critical thinking occurs throughout our classrooms, but our librarians are really helpful to our students in exploring the world.
Thank you, Ms. Byer. Mr. Duncan, what is your position on restricting student access to library books and why?
Well, like everyone has said so far, LPS has done a fantastic job of trying to stop and/or ban prohibitive material within their libraries and systems. But I also feel like, yes, that also, like, parents should have some kind of say and involvement of what kind of materials their student is reading. And whether it's just, and if parents don't let their student check out said books, it could just because of personal reasons, religious reasons, whatever the reason is, I am fully supportive of LPS of what they've done for the libraries, but I, like I said, also want the parents to have some kind of involvement as well.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. Dr. Johnson Farr, what is your position on restricting student access to library books and why?
I would support the whole idea that my other friends here have mentioned about being age-appropriate, but one of the pieces that certainly is important is that we recall that the district has a policy in place that seems to be working. And so if we honor the policy that is in place, then we should be able to be satisfied with the communication that goes on in that process. A good practitioner always has a Plan B, an alternative assignment. So again, in those moments where there are questions, a good practitioner always has a Plan B.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson Farr. We have now reached the end of our questions for tonight's forum. Each candidate will now have one minute for a closing statement where they can summarize their priorities and share any final thoughts with the community as Election Day approaches. We will begin with Mr. Goodwin.
Just the benefit of sitting next to you, huh? Definitely appreciate you all for coming out. I truly believe District One will be in great hands after May 6. I encourage you all to vote. The one thing that I really want to prioritize is the career pathways for these students, making sure that not only do they graduate, but they have a career when they graduate and that they are prepared for the world, they're prepared for that career, if that be school, if that be the armed forces, if that getting right into a career with a local business and an outside local business. For them to be prepared, each student deserves an opportunity to be successful. And it's our job to make sure that they are well-qualified and prepared to go out to the world, to share their gift with everyone that is, that can share or can experience what they have. So thank you for coming again, I appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. Goodwin. Ms. Byer?
First of all, I ask for your vote. Your vote for Barbara Byer, myself, will be a vote for experience and stability on the Lincoln Board of Education. I will ensure that our teachers are supported, that I will advocate for all our students regardless of their background. I will go and ensure school safety and that there are avenues and supports for good mental health for our students and our teachers. And lastly, and most importantly, I will ensure that our community's children have an excellent education that leads them to post-secondary opportunities here in Lincoln, in the state of Nebraska, throughout the country and the world. Thank you for coming tonight and listening.
Thank you, Ms. Byer. Mr. Duncan?
Well, as I said in my opening, I'm 23, have no political experience, but that doesn't, I would say, really matter. Just vote with your heart. Vote for someone who will fight for budget transparency, fight for student mental health and student safety, someone who will advocate for teacher and paraprofessional retention. And thank you all for coming out tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. Dr. Johnson Farr?
I am a teacher of teachers and a lifelong learner. A student sent me a note recently as she testified on the need for paid family leave and teacher retention grants. She thanked me for teaching her the power of advocacy. I want to take that same advocacy to my board seat for students, staff, and families so that all the challenges in this season that we may face, we have one another to lean on during moments of struggle and not panic, but remain hopeful. I won't disappoint if you vote for me on May 6.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson Farr. And last but not least, Mr. Cartier.
Thanks again to everyone coming out tonight and breathing the storm. And, you know, for District One, we are following over 20 years of dedicated leadership by Kathy Danick and just take a second to really, you know, appreciate her for all the fantastic work she's done for LPS as well as the entire board. You know, we've been fortunate enough here in Lincoln for a consistent, steady-handed leadership that has yielded results. And, you know, no matter what, whether it's me or Mr. Goodwin, I think that District One's going to be in really good hands. And moving forward, I would love to continue to prioritize putting teachers first in their perspective, guiding a lot of the initiatives and decisions we make as we continue to prepare our students for all the challenges in life that they're going to encounter. And thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cartier. Jean?
So, thank you for joining us tonight for the Candidates Forum. Thank you to all the candidates who joined us and a special thank you to Danielle for the outstanding job she did moderating tonight. Let's give her a round of applause.
Thank you.
The Legal Women Voters has a one-stop shop for election information and that's vote411.org where you can find your polling place, read responses from the candidates, as well as build your ballot. Whether you use Vote411 or you already know where, when, and how to vote, please vote. Early ballots are out or on the way and you'll have until May 6, Election Day, to return those ballots to the election commission. So thank you all for coming and good night.